Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order the regular meeting of the Tracy City Council at 6:30 PM on Monday, June 24th, 2019. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any vocation, please?
I have to read for you a section of Matthew, Chapter 5, which is better known as "The Beatitudes." Jesus said, "Blessed are the poor in spirit, for theirs are the kingdom of heaven; blessed are those who mourn, for they will be comforted; blessed are the meek, for they will inherit the earth; blessed are those who hunger for righteousness, for they will be filled; blessed are the merciful, for they will be shown merciful." Let me pray for you. Jesus, I pray that you would be with these people who are here today. They're here to humbly serve the city. They're here because they want our city to be a good place to live. They're here to, on behalf of many people who live here. We pray that you would give them wisdom to make decisions that are right for our community. We pray that you would give them unity so that they could, together, work strongly and get the tasks done that are before them. We pray, Lord, for patience and communication, that you would help each and every person to be able to accurately speak what truths they have to share with the group. We pray all these things in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Please be seated.
Yeah, I got two more. Hey, you're right.
Okay, so, looks like we have an amendment to... Oh, wait, now we're doing the minutes. Did everybody get a chance to read the minutes? Does anybody have any changes or typos, anything like that?
Make a motion for the minutes.
Second. First and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to approve the minutes from last meeting. Now, onto the agenda. Looks like we have one addition.
Yeah, 12(c)(1), a resolution approving a payment to Reiner Contracting for completed work on the stabilization problems.
Okay.
Motion to approve is amended.
First and second, any discussion?
Did we want to remove that 8(b), or 10(b), rather?
That's up to you guys.
That's why I was asking Jerry.
Well, we can wait and see how long a's.
Okay.
If it gets to be too long, we can just postpone. We can cable it to the next meeting if that...
That's all after discussion, huh?
Okay. Uh, have a first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to approve the agenda as amended. Does anybody have any conflicts of interest this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on. Public comment. Anyone want to stand up for public comment and address anything that is not on the agenda this evening? Department head reports. Who would like to go first?
I can. Uh, the EDA, I'll be, uh, we had announced last, two weeks ago, at the, uh, at the city council meeting, that, that we were approved for the small cities grants. I'll be going to my first training on Wednesday in Mankato to learn more about the procedure of dispersing the funds and when the funds will be here and a little bit of everything. Hopefully, I'll, I'll be on, on top of that. Got some news today dealing with the, uh, the housing projects that we were, that we've been working on. We sold another lot on Broad Acres, so now the southwest one is sold, and now the southeast one is sold also. So, um, right now with the current bills or the current, um, amount of money that we paid out of the, uh, the EDA fund, we are, uh, we're pretty close to already breaking even with the two lots sold. So, that is, uh, that is good news. Uh, currently working on a project to offer first-time homeowners' loans for, uh, for qualified applicants. I've got some examples sitting on my desk right now. I plan on typing something up with, uh, with qualifications and with steps for the process and for, uh, you know, what is, you know, what are the, what is needed to get one of those loans. Working with the EDA board on what money we will put into an account to use those, those funds and how much. Um, we, uh, since the last time we talked, we've been trying to work on, uh, on Third Street over here, Main Street, we'll call it, and the EDA has its hands on the, what is called the old Asian market that was right next to the post office, and we do have our hands on that now, so that is, uh, up for sale. It, right now, we've got estimates coming in from five different groups on estimates for the roof and what needs to be done with the roof, and actually got keys for that, that building today. Last thing I got for you, the, at the last EDA meeting, we actually had the Tracy Dance Academy come in and accept their first half installment for $2,500 for opening up a business here in town and remodeling a, an off, or, uh, a building on Third Street also. Um, they presented to the group and told the group, the EDA board, what they were going to do with the money, which consisted of mirrors and lockers for the over 160 dancers and tumblers that, that will be coming to town on a, on a weekly basis, and they will be spending all that money right here in town. So, besides that, every two-week, uh, EDA board meetings, um, a lot of real estate meetings.
So, what was the other building on Third Street?
Um, that would have been, uh, well, that would have been the, um, would have been the, uh, the building that the Tracy Dance Academy has bought. It was an old Summit Place.
Right, right, okay. I thought you were saying there was an additional one.
Nope.
Okay.
Working on another one, but, yes.
Awesome.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions for Jeff? Thank you. Um, go with the liquor store.
Things are going well there. Sales in May in 2018 were 57,874. In 2000, May for 2019, they were 63,389. Sunday sales seem to be doing well and staying pretty steady. Third, last Thursday, we had a, another tasting event. It wasn't as well-attended as the previous ones, but I didn't realize it was Prairie View's, um, pie and social that day, and the band was like their final performance or whatever, so there's a lot of people over there. But, um, Thursday, we have two different vendors coming in for demos for a POS system to see which one, what they have to offer and what they can, what their programs consist of. And that's about it for this month. If anybody has any questions?
Is, are those point-of-sale vendors, is that compatible with Banyan, or are we just going out and...
They're both compatible with Banyan. Um, one of them is the system that we already have, um, the ARS system or whatever, and the other one is the one that a lot of other liquor stores have and are on the area. Paul... Yeah, I don't know how to pronounce the last name. Say that again?
Yeah, it's, that's, you know, as they're compatible with what we have, that's all they always consider.
They'll input, um, they actually want separation in those systems, so one can't come in and...
Yep.
...cause problems into the other.
I assume the one that we already have, it's just an updated version, yes?
What we have now is not an updated version, actually, and it, it...
But that's what they're pitching, is an updated version?
Yeah. I mean, and we won't change systems until we move, but we just want to get, like, we just want, like, to tell, let people, you know, find out what they have, what the two programs differ, and what we're looking for in the program, kind of a thing. But, the system that we actually have now is old, and, and it needs to be updated and replaced. It's not compatible anymore with, because it's on Windows 7.
All right. So, the ones, the ones that we're looking at, the, one of them you said was the same as what we have?
It's the same total register who did the ARS. They now do it off-step called, keystroke or whatever, but it's the same company that we had have in the past.
What I'm working around to is a whole new system versus an update in cost. It would...
That's what we're working on.
I would think an update would be cheaper than a whole new system, yeah?
Um, because of the equipment, the dated, the, the equipment's outdated, now would be the ideal time to change if we want to change.
Gotcha.
So, that's what she's exploring both.
Yeah, because...
Just the bottom line, we'll make sure that whatever we get into can talk to what we have here that we're dealing with. That's, that's where a bigger expense will come in, is if they didn't talk to each other.
Yeah, it has to have backward compatibility.
Yeah. But they're, like, our, our equipment now is not going to be, um, supported after the next six months, he said, because it's too old.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else, you guys?
Thank you.
You're good, you're up.
Chief Liquor, you want to step up to the podium, please?
Entertain any questions you might have on the activity reports. I really don't have anything to add to my memo, so...
Thanks for working the extra hours. Appreciate that.
Anybody have any other questions?
Good to know, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Shane, you want to go next?
Sure. I have a few things I can add, uh, since I did my report. I actually had, due to the amount of grass that got away from us at the airport, I actually had someone come in and rake it and bale it, uh, for what we had, all the loose grass, so we can get through their mower easier. They can't really use the grass, but in turn, we, uh, let them bale the, around the ponds, because that hadn't been mowed either, because it's been so wet. We're going to let them rake that for hay and keep that, and then we'll start mowing after that, so. Actually helped us out immensely, saved us probably a whole week of, of part-time route there trying to chase the grass around, so. We started tilling some areas around parks, and then, uh, we did that water curb stop replacement in the ditch out by Swift Lake, by, down at Yorkland, so we ended up finally being able to get dry enough to get down there with a tiller, and then it broke down, so we haven't done much else as far as tilling after that. But, um, then we leveled off and pulled some sidewalk out for, on the EDA lots Friday, tried to clean that up a little bit better there, and then, uh, the street sweeper came out today and started cleaning up streets again, so. And, uh, we'll be looking at doing some patching, hopefully, as, whenever it quits raining for a couple of days and it's a little warmer, where we can get the mix to town. Talked to, um, well, it's Dunick now, and their mix plant, and they're not going to make any cold mix here probably until fall, so. So, that's why the potholes are, I mean, we scraped out whatever we had left, I think a half a skid loader bucket to fill a doozy last Friday, but that's literally all we have, so. Uh, we'll be getting, uh, hot mix to fill with what's remaining out right now, so. That's kind of where I'm at. Any questions?
We made any progress on the Front Street deal with the county?
They have not reached out to us. Um, I don't, the meantime, Chris and I recorded that. I'll be going, uh, to meet with Homeland Security and some FEMA reps up in the county here on Wednesday, so.
Some of that might be, um, uh, covered, so to speak, by, um, they added frost boils this year, so.
Okay.
Let's see, it's eligible, whether ours meet the criteria or not is still yet to be determined. And as far as the county, the, the last thing that we had from the county is they wanted 60 to 90 days to do the surveying of the potential ditch area and stuff, and finishing by the, what some people refer to as the vet clinic ditch in that Front Street area.
Okay.
You know, that's one of the solutions that they want to come up with, and they need to send their own county surveying crew out for that. To my knowledge, that has not happened yet.
I, there's no markings or anything out there, so. We plan on trying to level it out a little better than what it is now, and try to get it drivable, so we can pull the cones, whether it's putting a skim coat on it, just to get it by for now, or, you know, until they do what they need to do. But as far as digging it out and putting a base under, it's not worth it, because the pipe's shot underneath it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But, we're going to try to Band-Aid it, because it's kind of hard for us to sweep it, and if it does get in the winter, to plow it's going to be impossible, too, so. But, yeah, that's where that's kind of at right now. Same with that, there's a frost boil on Roland Street there, uh, near Second Street. That one there is kind of in the same situation. It's not to the extent of Front Street, but it's definitely still noticeable.
Is that a tile issue as well, or we don't know?
That's, that's probably just a road base issue.
Okay.
And now that we've got everything documented, um, we can actually probably go ahead and fix those now, so it'll be on our...
I think First Street has some challenges, too, doesn't it?
First Street East?
Yes.
Yes. Yep, we pulled a bunch of stuff out of the gutters, uh, last week, pushed it back into the middle of the road to kind of help the middle of the road there, and they'll kind of give it a base to, kind of like, ground to asphalt, more or less, for a base there, and then hopefully we can get it skim-coated with something, just to keep kicking it down the road, but it just needs to be replaced.
Okay. Do we have any plans for that? Is that something that might be coming up in a future project?
In a future phase.
That's what I thought, yeah.
The problem right now is, um, the Center Street sewer needs to be replaced, because it's too shallow. They made everything deeper in Phase 1 to connect to it, but they're kind of waiting to partner with the county, meaning it's a county road, to share the costs and the, the road base and the...
Like, uh, Four Street?
Yep.
Got it, okay.
So, and then, when that's deeper, then we can start heading east with it. But, unfortunately, it's, there's nicer roads with worse infrastructure underneath it, and just doesn't always line up real well with, uh, with the pavement condition, so, but...
Okay, and...
We'll try to make it.
And I can appreciate that. I just, uh, for, you know, the folks watching and that, you know, um, I've heard a few comments about the roads, and I just wanted folks to know that...
Yep.
We're not ignoring it, we're looking at it, and where we're at with it.
Yep.
So, for the public know.
We'd like it to be at least in the eighties for hot mix, because it's the time you get from Marshall to here with a truck, you don't have much time to work with it, so.
Okay.
I'd like to pass on a thank you for getting that flight handling equipment taken care of, and, and the guys are doing a super job getting them up when they're supposed to stop. I really appreciate that, so.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you very much.
I'll let them know.
Yep, everything looks good. You guys have been doing a good job. Anybody have anything else for Shane? Thank you, sir. Uh, are you going to handle the librarian or...
Yeah, um, both the librarian and the fire chief couldn't be here tonight.
Okay.
I did speak with both of them. They didn't have any additional items on their, uh, on their things. The one thing that Val from the library asked me to just tell you is that the library basement remodel is going really good. They're really excited about it over there, and they're pretty pumped, and it, I've been over there, too. It's a whole different world over there right now, so it's looking pretty good.
Awesome.
Um, we did, we are going to apply a little bit of the grant, where we came in with the bid and where the grant was, there was a little bit of money in there, and, uh, talking to Shane, just to alleviate, so we don't have any water problems, we're looking at putting a sump and a dehumidifier in the back corner in there, uh, just, just to ensure that, you know, our, our newly constructed area doesn't start getting water damage or something like that, and it, and it's something that should have been in that building years ago, but since the basement was empty, nobody really monitored that, so. I know they're working on bids on that right now, and if we can stay within that, that price range, then we're definitely going to try and add that, or if we can't stay within that, then we'll come back to that council with, uh, recommendation.
Probably working on it right now.
So, yeah, other than that, that's, that's all I have for the fire department. I agree, you want me to continue with mine?
Sure.
Um, just a bunch of meetings, stuff going on. I'm starting to gather up the capital improvement stuff. That's, that's been one of my big projects ongoing right now, so that we can start setting up sort of our budgeting meeting. I'd like to set up a, um, I've got a little bit of work left to do on my side of it, and I'd like to set up a working budget meeting with you guys, uh, and do a work session and sit down and go over some of the stuff, so we can get some guidance ahead of time, so that we don't end up with, you putting all the work in and then you had a different direction or something like that, so. And that's definitely recommended procedure for moving forward with that. We're working on reclassifying the journal entries that the auditors gave us, so they gave us plenty of them, and that's pretty common practice. We get quite a few of them. There is only one water meter left to connect, so that's pretty good, and that one is, there's a plumbing issue to deal with that one. One of the other ones that was not changed out, um, the water, we ended up shutting the power off for, for not meeting certain terms of our agreements, so, um, that one has been shut off. They didn't pay their bill. Uh, and that one's off, and the only way they can get it reconnected is give a new meter in place, so that problem will solve itself when the time comes. The other one, uh, once the plumbing is taken care of, that one will be finished, and we'll have all the water meters changed. So, that worked well. So, the, so we basically divided it up into two floods. Now, we got the July, or, two weather-related things. The July 2018, we're just still working with FEMA on that. There's a lot of disconnect between FEMA and the state right now, and they're not agreeing on terms on certain things. I mean, it's getting so far to the state now where the state's the final approval, and, uh, the state's not agreeing on the dollar amount or, um, certain things like that. It's getting kicked back to FEMA, and it's got to come all the way back to me, and I'm on my third one of that right now, so. Uh, just, it's one of those things, we just gotta, just got to do it their way. Uh, and then, uh, Wednesday, we have the applicant briefing for Public Works and the fire response for the spring stuff, along with frost boils, which is, frost boils are not typically part of it, so that's, that's a really good thing for us. And that has to do with the oversaturation of the ground and the frost just, just pushing up. It still gets under the roads even, you know, just by cracks and things like that. Uh, upcoming stuff, we got League of Minnesota Cities Annual Training, I got later this week, Southwestern Regional Development Commission Annual Meeting, they're going to stop in Tracy, and they want to see some of the infrastructure stuff that we have going on. I sent you guys all the invite to that one, that was what that invite was, and then, uh, we have a Tracy Active Living meeting coming up. Other than that, it's beginning of budget time. Kind of my main focus right now.
Okay, anybody got any questions for Chris? Well, thank you very much. And you, too, by the way. I've done a heck of a job. You got, uh, you got a big plate.
It's, I got a big office, it fits.
Abdou Eiken Myers Audit Presentation.
Thank you. So, in your packets, you guys should have three documents. There is an audit report, which is all of the detail. There is a slide deck, a presentation that we're going to go through tonight, and then there's also a management communication that we're going to touch on, just a few pages in this. But we're going to go ahead and start with the slide deck. So, what we're going to do is, we're going to start off and talk about what is the responsibility of an audit, what's the responsibility of you as management. Um, we're going to talk about the general fund. How did the general fund do? We're going to talk about the other governmental funds, so your special revenues, capital projects. We'll move into enterprise funds, and then we're going to do some ratios where we compare the city of Tracy to various peer groups throughout the state to help provide some context to your, your performance or your results. So, the auditor's responsibility, we are responsible to issue an opinion on the financial statements. Do those financial statements present fairly in all material, material respects? So, meaning are they truthful and accurate within a reasonable range? We provide reasonable assurance, not absolute. I can't guarantee that there is no error within this book, but within a material range they are truthful, accurate, and materially fairly stated. Management's responsibility is to prepare the financial statements, accept ownership of them, as well as maintain, design, and implement internal controls to safeguard the assets of the city. Okay? So, the opinion that we issued is a clean opinion. It's an unmodified opinion. Your accounting adheres to generally accepted accounting principles. There's no deviations from auditing standards or accounting standards, so they are truthful and accurate within a material range, and they follow the applicable accounting standards. We also did what's called a single audit. When you guys expend over $750,000 of federal expenditures, you are required to go through a single audit. Now, a single audit is a compliance audit, so we're looking, are, is the city of Tracy expending those federal dollars within the grant guidelines? Are they approving appropriate costs? Are they paying the bills in a timely manner? Are they following contract and bidding requirements? So, we're looking at things from a compliance standard. There were no findings that came to light under the single audit, so you guys are following those rules and guidelines within that federal framework. The third report that we issued was a Minnesota legal compliance report, so what we do is we look for compliance with Minnesota state statutes. Are you guys insuring those public funds? So, if you deposit funds in a bank, are they fully insured with collateral? Are you paying your bills in a timely manner? Are you doing contract and bidding appropriately? With, there were no findings on the, under the Minnesota legal compliance, so you guys are following statutes from the tests that we've performed. There were some audit findings around the internal control framework. The first one is the preparation of the financial statements. So, we assist the city in preparing the financial report, the financial statements. We receive trial balance information from the city staff. We audit those numbers, and then we help prepare the financial statements. That is a finding, because there is a risk that we may miss a disclosure, because we don't work within the city on a daily basis. We do ask a lot of questions, we inspect a lot of documents, but because we, because the city does not prepare the financial statements, we do issue a finding. There is a risk. We have compensating controls in place. We have multiple levels of review within our firm. We have a second partner review at a different office that comes in and looks at the documents as well, but because there's not someone within the city that prepares those documents, we do have to issue a finding. There's also a limited segregation of duties. Within the accounting cycle, there is the authorization, the access, and the, the accounting of the finances. There is an individual or individuals that are in control of more than one area within that. This finding's been out there for several years. I know Chris has taken kind of a, a stronger look at that realm, and I think there's going to be some major improvements that are taking place, so that one may go away in the future. There's also a material audit adjustment. I do have a typo on here. This is not a legal compliance finding. It is an internal control document. I do apologize for that. But there was a material audit adjustment. The financial records, the trial balance that we provided, there were some material entries that we did propose to management and discuss with management. They agreed with the findings. Those material audit adjustments revolved around capital asset and accounts payable activity. So, those are the journal entries that Chris referred to earlier that we prepared or proposed. Now, we're going to get into the general fund side of things. Everybody's interested in the fund balance, so I'm going to start off with the fund balance report. On this graph here, the gray bar is the city's goal to have 35% to 50% fund balance of next year's general fund expenditures. So, next year's general fund expenditures are $2,143,146. You guys have 36% of fund balance, available resources, to meet those next year's needs, 2019's needs. So, you can see that you guys are within that range, you're on the lower side of the range, but you did have an increase in fund balance. Just to provide some context, the fiscal year 17's fund balance was $768,000. There was an increase in fund balance by just about $26,000 to bring you guys to $794,115. So, you do have adequate fund balance, but again, continue to build that if you can, just to prepare for the rainy day. Governmental revenues, general fund revenues typically come in two big batches, local local government aid and property taxes. They're typically spaced six months apart, so it's important to have adequate resources available to make those long stretches between those large inflows of resources. So, if you can, continue to build that fund balance, just to prepare in case of, of a need of a, a major repair. If we go to the next page here, we're gonna look at the performance of the general fund. So this is looking at that budget to actual, and as well as kind of that performance. There's that $25,000 or $26,000 increase in fund balance. So here, revenues came in over budget. You guys had $42,000 of additional revenues than budgeted. The big cause of that, or the main driver of that, you guys had some, um, you guys had some donations come in in the library fund, so that was, actually, no, I'm sorry, I take that back. This is general fund, I gotta slow down. Um, there were some refunds and reimbursements that I noted that were an increase above and beyond budget. Um, expenditures were over budget, so we have a negative variance there that mainly related to the flood. So you guys had a couple of major weather events that took place, those were unbudgeted. Um, those brought down your fund balance. The positive side, when those FEMA dollars are awarded, you can book that revenue and then that will be recognized in fiscal year 19. So 19, when those revenues or those FEMA dollars are awarded, you will see a, a positive variance on the revenue side. Bond proceeds, you guys had a loan from the League of Minnesota Cities, a five-year temporary loan to help cover some of those costs. Um, those were, were booked as an other financing source, just to hold you through. So overall, you had a negative variance of $43,000. You expected increased fund balance by $68,000. You settled out with the $25,749. Next, we're gonna start looking at some of the revenue sources and we'll give you some, some trends. Um, here you can see your taxes. So taxes were a little bit lower this year. There was an increase in delinquent taxes, um, so your revenues were a little bit lower because of that. Intergovernmental revenues, so your grants from the state, the federal, are holding steady, as well as charges for services and transfers. Um, here with the other, that's gonna be those refunds or reimbursements. You had some, some anomalies that, that took place this year, kind of some other revenues. Here, we're gonna start looking at the expenditure side of things. Um, general governmental revenues are trending down, so that's gonna be kind of that administrative space. Um, those expenditures are coming down. Public safety is, there's a little bit of variation, but down over prior year. Um, public works is holding steady, as well as culture and recreation. Economic development is creeping up as Jeff continues to work hard to attract businesses. Um, your miscellaneous revenues, your flood-related expenditures are in that large green line, that large increase there, that's gonna be for your flood, disaster-related. Um, capital outlay, there was an increase in capital outlay activity this year, so that's gonna be your general fund activity. And then transfer out did creep up a little bit as well. Here, we're gonna start looking at some of those other capital project funds. Um, I do wanna point out some of the larger variances. Um, the first one, we've got that 2016 street project. You guys had some additional expenditures that are taking place, kind of wrapping up that project. So that fund balance did have a decrease of $114,000, mainly due because that project was taking place. The other one, that infrastructure replacement reserve way at the bottom, had a positive increase in fund balance of about $76,000. Um, that fund there was mainly due to an additional levy. There was some tax levy that came into that fund, um, to help pay for future storm sewer replacement, um, as well as the, there's a utility surcharge that got, that, that is being reseeded in there to help cover future infrastructure costs. Um, the purpose of that infrastructure replacement reserve is to really cover future expenditures, so to accumulate funds over time to help pay for ongoing infrastructure. Next, we'll look at your special revenues. There's a couple here that I would like to point out. Um, the first one being the library trust, um, had an increase in fund balance of $68,000. Um, there you had a couple of events. You had a, an estate, there was an estate that donated several, several thousand dollars to the library, as well as a grant that was awarded, um, to the library. Um, the other thing that I wanna point out is the economic development fund. There's an increase in fund balance of $274,000. Uh, the reason for that increase is the transfer in due to the sale of the Eastview Apartments. So you guys had sold that, that Eastview Apartments and transferred the resources over to the economic development fund. So, those are the two that I would like to point out there. Next, we're gonna start looking at some of the debt service. Um, so this graph here, what we do is we chart out the next 10 years of debt service payments for you to help you guys see a trend and you can kind of see where debts starts to fall off. Um, you can see here, you've got, uh, six debt service funds. Um, the first one's gonna fall off, the 2008 Geo Refunding Bond falls off in 2022. Um, and that's gonna be your first decrease here. And then in 2025, you'll have another debt maturing, so you can kind of see where those debts start to fall off. Um, you know, as you start to plan, those dates or those years are important. If you are going to take on additional debt, those would be the times to consider it. Because if you have debt falling off, you can have another debt take on and then your levy can stay constant instead of having peaks and valleys in your debt service levy. So, that's a good graph, just to be aware of, as you can chart out and plan for the future. Next, I wanna look at the water fund. Um, so we're getting into the enterprise funds. Um, here, this blue graph is your operating receipts. So those charges for services, the cash collections from, from your consumers or your residents. Um, the gray bar is your operating receipts, the cost to provide that water. And then the green in the top graph is gonna be your debt service payments. Um, so here, this year you can see that the blue bar exceeds the gray bar, so your operating receipts exceeded those operating expenditures. So there was a, a change in rate structure. And your debt service, uh, had, had a bond that fell off, so there was a positive increase in cash. There is a, a deficit in cash in that fund. That fund has been, been underperforming in the past. If we look back at 2015, 2016, you can see, um, that you had some heavy debt service payments. So your cash has been decreasing, um, and there's a deficit of cash of $154,000 in that fund. So that's something that you guys will need to consider and reevaluate rates on an ongoing basis. I, I was told this morning that there was a, a rate study that was approved.
Correct.
So you guys will be looking at those rates, as well as a long-term plan to help you guys manage and plan for future capital, future debt payments, and really make sure that those rates are aligned with, with your, your expenditures. So. It, it can be corrected, but just be aware that there is a deficit in cash. Um, also wanted to note that in this fund, there was $144,000 of capital expenditures this year. So that is another reason for, for the lower cash. Next, we'll get into the sewer fund. Um, sewer fund is, is performing well. You've got, uh, you've got adequate cash coming into that fund. So again, the blue bar is the, the operating receipts, the gray is the operating expenditures, green is debt payments. Um, you're having a positive change in cash. Um, down here, this, this gray graph, or the lower graph, I apologize, the green bar is your cash, the blue bar is 50% of next year's operating receipts plus debt payments. So it's, it's really looking at, do you have adequate resources to operate that fund? Um, and you do. The green bar is above the, the minimum requirement. The reason for the decrease in cash from 2016 to 17 is really because you had those bond proceeds in there for that large project that you guys are undertaking. Next, we'll look at the liquor store. Um, the liquor store is, is basically breaking even last year. Um, when we look at it from a full accrual basis, the change in net position was $33,000, um, but from a cash standpoint, uh, there was an increase in cash of about $4,099. So from a, just a pure cash standpoint, you're, you're breaking even. Um, there is a cash deficit in that fund of $32,000 from prior year losses, so again, you need to really consider how that fund is performing. Um, based on the liquor store report that I heard earlier, it sounds like sales are strong, so again, to continue to monitor those liquor store receipts and disbursements and monitor that. If we look here on this slide here, we've got some statewide averages. So up at the top, here we have statewide averages from the Office of State Auditor. Down below, we have City of Tracy. Um, so here you can see the average income before transfers is 7.4%, where City of Tracy is 5.8, so you guys are about 1.6 below the state average. So again, continue to monitor that liquor store, make sure sales are, are going well. Uh, the new point of sale will help with managing inventory. Um, but again, continue to monitor that, 'cause the liquor store is, is underperforming. Um, next is Deputy Register Fund. Um, this fund had a rough year. Um, looking at the operating revenues compared to operating receipts, there was a, a loss, basically. Um, looking at the gross profit, so you consider your, your receipts, less what you pay to the state. Um, you had $45,000 in gross profit, um, but wages alone, there was $63,000 in wages coded to that fund or recorded in that fund, so you are, you're losing ground. Um, so that's something that needs to be kind of evaluated. That's a tough one, you know? I know that you can't really increase revenues in that fund or increase rates, it's really dictated by the state. So, something to consider, that, that Deputy Register is losing ground, um, so something to, to keep an eye on. Um, next, we're looking at O'Brien Court. Um, this fund is doing very well. Um, operating revenues far exceed operating expenditures. There's no debt in this fund. Um, so there's ample cash in this fund. Again, here, if you look at your cash balances, you have a, a heavy, a healthy cash balance. Um, but again, there's no debt in that fund, so it's, it's just generating revenues for you, generating cash. So, that one is doing very well. Next is Orchard Lane. From an operating standpoint, here, your blue bar, your operating receipts far exceed operating expenditures, but there is debt within this fund, so you have a debt service payment, um, that is taking up a, a fair amount of your cash. So, from a general operating receipts, operating expenditures, it's doing well, but when you factor in that debt service, um, you know, there, there is a, a deficit or a, a decrease in fund balance. Um, Eastview Apartments, um, these apartments were sold this year. Um, here you can see that the cash went down to zero. Um, again, there was a $283,000 transfer out of this fund into the economic development fund. Um, so this, these apartments were sold, um, but in the past, again, you can see that operating receipts did exceed the expenditures, but again, there was debt. That debt was defused this year and then the additional $280,000 was transferred out to the EDA fund. Uh, the utility surcharge fund. Um, so this fund here, I think there's, the, the big change that took place here is that those receipts were brought into that utility, or the, uh, utility, the infrastructure replacement reserve. Um, so that governmental fund that we talked about earlier that had the increase of about $76,000, these receipts, they, the, it had dual purpose. There were really two funds that had the same goal, is to, to save future resources. Um, so those, those, that utility surcharge was put with the tax levy that was there to save for future infrastructure. So this fund, I think, is gonna be closed in the, in the next year from, from what Chris and I had talked about during the audit. Uh, refuse collection, um, here, this fund is really just breaking even. Um, the revenues are, are basically covering the expenses. There is a cash deficit, we didn't get our little note here. There is a cash deficit, uh, or a, an advance from another fund of $7,760, um, that will need to be paid back. So again, you will need to evaluate the rates within this utility fund, and I think that, that could be something that's part of that debt service, or that utility rate study. Here, we're looking at cash balances. Um, so the blue is gonna be your enterprise funds. Um, the red is your capital project fund, your darker blue is your general fund. So your general fund cash has increased from 17 to 18. The biggest decrease is gonna be in that enterprise fund. Um, again, because of that large project, your phase, phase two and phase three that took place last year, you guys had bonded for those a couple of years back. So you had bonded for those and you started to spend those down, so that's the reason for the large decrease in cash in the enterprise funds, is simply because of that project. Next, we're gonna get into some comparative ratios. Um, so here we've got class, uh, class four cities, so those under 10,000 population within the entire state of Minnesota, as the green bar. Um, we also have the gray bar, which is gonna be cities within Lyon County, and then the blue is gonna be the city of Tracy. Um, the top graph is the tax rate. So, I do wanna put some context on that tax rate. Here, if you look at, just on a tax rate, it looks like the city of Tracy is way above the peer group. Um, and it is above the peer group. The reason for that is lower property values within city of Tracy. So just the way that is calculated, where we take the levy and the market value and calculate a ratio, with lower property values, you're gonna have a higher tax rate. But to provide some context, if we look at it on a dollar basis, so here we're looking at taxes per capita, taxes per population, you are a little bit higher, but not, not extremely higher. So I don't think they're, they're way out of line, um, but I did wanna provide both graphs, just to provide some context. Next, here if we look at debt, uh, we're looking at debt per capita, so this is all debt, enterprise debt and governmental debt. Um, City of Tracy has a lot of debt. You guys took on a lot of debt with the sewer project, but it was something that was required. Um, but again, proper planning, utility rate study, long-term plan will help you manage that debt effectively. It is very low interest rate debt, so that is a, a plus as well. So here you can see that you guys are quite a bit higher than the peer groups. Um, but down here, this is your debt service expenditures as a percentage of expenditures. This is general fu, or governmental funds. Here, you're within reason. That's telling me that the bulk of your debt is utility-based debt, enterprise debt. So it's, it's mainly in the sewer. So it's gonna be those, those revenue-type funds, so it's, it's all revenue debt. But again, making sure those rates are in line to cover those debt services will be important going forward. Here, we're gonna look at current expenditures. Uh, this is governmental type. Um, you guys are a little above average for both peer groups when it comes to just current expenditures, so that's your general government, your public safety, public works, culture rec, EDA. Um, you guys are a little bit higher. Um, we'll get into a little bit more detail in the next slide. And then here, for capital expenditures, this can vary, um, quite a bit from year to year, but I think you guys are, are really within line. You're within the line for the peer group two, or the, I'm sorry, the peer group four, last four cities, um, as well as within the county. So I don't think there's anything out of the ordinary there. Here, we'll get into expenditures by program, so these are your current expenditures. Um, public safety, you guys are a little bit higher on public safety expenditures compared to Lyon County, a little within line with the peer group. Um, and then your culture rec is a little bit higher. I think your culture and rec and your governmental are, are, are driving those averages up. Down below here, we're looking at revenues. Um, I think you guys are, are, again, here's that taxes. You're a little bit higher than your peer groups, but I don't think off the charts. I think you're within a, a reasonable range. Um, here, you guys have intergovernmental revenues, you guys get a lot of state aids, federal aids, so I think you're doing well there. And then this miscellaneous one jumps up. Um, this again is, is due to, um, the refunds and reimbursements in the general fund, as well as the library. Uh, within the library, you got those, those help, those nice gifts, the estate, as well as the grant. Um, here we're looking at water fund debt service coverage. Um, so here, you're, you're doing well in your water fund right now, your water fund's doing very healthy, you're able to make those debt service. Um, if that ratio was 100, that means that you would have just, just enough money to make that next debt payment. Um, so you guys can make 2.73, you, you can easily make that debt payment. Um, with the sewer fund, you're a little bit, you're, you're doing better in the sewer fund. Um, if we look at 2017, your ratio was .76, you had a, a refunding bond that took place there. But again, I don't think anything to be concerned of, but again, you have those USC, USDA bonds that will be coming due, um, that will be refunded. I think it's a 40-year loan, so. Next, Orchard Lane Debt Service Fund. There isn't really a peer group that we had here. Um, again, that, that debt service fund and we look, when we looked at that enterprise fund on several slides ago, um, where your operating revenues were not quite covering your operating expenses plus debt service payments. So here you can struggle with a ratio below 100%, you can struggle to make that debt service fund, or that debt service payment. So again, just something to be considered, um, as you guys look at that. And then I know those public housings, they're, they're there to serve the public, so. And then we have your audit team. Tom Olenger was the partner, Aaron Enstead was our manager. Um, again, I'm Chad Hess. We had Zach and Abby, Hunter and Lindsay help out on the audit. So, do you guys have questions for me?
There was one of these slides.
Yep.
That, it said there was no debt, but if I'm reading it right, we had interest payment.
Which fund was that?
I'm looking.
Okay.
Here it is. Um, O'Brien Court Fund. O'Brien Court Fund. The gray bar is interest, is that correct?
The gray bar is your operating expenses.
Okay.
So that's going to be kind of your, basically to operate the apartments.
All right.
But there, yeah, there is no debt. If there was a green bar here, that would be your debt service, principal interest.
Okay, that's, I'm good, thank you.
Yep, so that apartment complex is debt-free, generating good revenues. Next, within the management communication, there are a couple of changes in accounting standards that I do want to touch base on. There are several coming up. Most of them aren't going to be applicable to the city of Tracy. The one that I do want to point out is going to be Gatsby 87, which talks about leases. There's a big leasing change coming. So if you guys are considering leasing any property, reach out to us, ask questions. The standards are changing where you would show an intangible asset, it's a right-to-use asset, along with the corresponding, basically, debt payment, you would show the asset and the liability. There's been some abuse within that, the previous standards, where people can do operating leases and not show the debt, basically. So they're tightening up that standard. If you are considering leasing property, buildings, just reach out, we can definitely inform you. There is some literature in here, but again, just maybe a conversation would be easier. There are several other standards, they're not really going to pertain to the city of Tracy. They're kind of getting out on the fringe of accounting standards, but that was the big one that I did want you guys to be aware of, as you plan for the future. Any lease that you would enter into now would become applicable under the new standards in 2020, so, something to be aware of. Lot of information, lot of good detail in the audit report, you can certainly read through that. You know, I'm phone call, email away too, if you guys do have additional questions.
Only question I had, and I could see it through the graphs, we're trending in the right direction on our utility rates for water and sewers.
Yeah, your water and sewer rates.
That was a big thing.
Yep, so they're doing okay.
Yep.
But you do have that.
They need to be tweaked, yep.
You do have that future debt coming.
Yep.
So I think going through that utility rate study will definitely help to make sure that you are going to cover those future debt payments. With the USDA bonds, they're temporary bonds, they're interest-only right now, but once those are refunded into permanent financing, I believe it's a 40-year loan.
Forty-year.
Yeah, 40-year loan, I want to say it's like 1%, 2% interest, it's really low. So it's cheap money, but again, it is an obligation that you need to pay. So going through that utility rate study will help you ensure that you are going to be able to make those payments, as well as, you know, you can start to structure your rates to, for conservation as well, where the more water you use, the more expensive it gets, so I think that's a proven thing.
That's something we had talked about, never did.
Yeah, yep, so I think going through that will definitely help give you guys some options and help you guys get a better understanding of where those rates need to be. The goal, you know, I hate to say it, is just gradually increase it. Nobody likes rate increases, but 1%, 2%, you know, is easier than a 10%, all of a sudden, that's a shock. And then with the long-term plan, looking at that five, 10-year plan, really looking at where's your capital going to be, where are your major reconstructions going to be, and start to plan that out will definitely help with the levy side of things, too. If you can start to plan and build up reserves, you know, increase that levy just a little bit each year, that's, you know, it's not great, but it's way better than a major jump in the levy five years down the road. So, small increases are definitely easier for the population, the residents, your constituents to swallow. I mean, nobody likes it, but it's just the way it is, things get more expensive as time passes, so.
Anybody else have any questions?
I think you guys did a fantastic job, you guys made it easy.
You know, we're here to help.
Thank you.
Peggy calls up, emails up, she's a pleasure to work with, Chris and all of the ladies. You know, we want to be a partner with you as well, we need to be independent and objective, but, you know, if you have questions, certainly ask, we can help you, you know, come up with kind of a best practice, or, you know, help you interpret accounting standards, and, you know, definitely reach out. We want to, you know, do the best we can to help you guys plan and prepare. So, it's been a pleasure working with Chris and the ladies, and I thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you tonight.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right, guys, thank you. If you do have questions, Chris knows how to get ahold of me, you can certainly reach out to me, and I can, yeah, help out in any way I can. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so, next would be the closed session, do we want to table that?
It's up to you guys. This went quicker than I thought it would, but.
You're the proponent of it, Jerry, so. No pressure, no.
You want time to prepare for it or something? I mean, I got, I think I have some post-acts in here, I don't know if you're going to give me one or not.
I think we can go ahead and just have it.
I'd make a motion, then we enter into a closed session at the end of our regular meeting for administrator's annual review.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we will do the closed session at the end of the meeting this evening. Runway 0624 abandonment grant.
So this is a grant that we got from the FAA and the MINDOT for that runway closure that you guys approved a little while back. It was really nice, Ballig actually jumped through a lot of hoops and got this advanced rather quickly, and the city's portion that we're going to end up paying because of this is $875, and the rest will be covered by FAA and MINDOT. So, they did their job, they did what we hired them for, and they did a good job. And this was, this is more complicated than it sounds, we're looking at the tail end of a lot of work on their part, so it was really, really good deal for us.
I'm still amazed, so, that's good.
Yeah.
Do we have a resolution on that one? No, we had it for changing the dollar amount, didn't we?
Did we have a resolution for it?
No, I just need an approval for the $875 from the council for.
Okay, can we get a motion?
Bring it into the task order.
So move, is that task, that's for the task order number eight?
Correct.
Okay, make a motion, approve the $875 for task order number eight with Ballig.
What is the exact number on that, $875?
What's that, I'm sorry?
What's the exact number, $875?
$875, exactly.
Exactly, okay.
Yep, that'll be our portion of it. It's a 95.5 grant.
Okay.
Which is very typical for the airport-related stuff.
First and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for, to approve the $875 on task order eight for the runway abandonment. Okay, so on to the legal issues, liquor store name change.
So in talking with the liquor store committee and some of the stuff that we've been talking about moving forward with this, we wanted to kind of come up with a theme of the liquor store. It does take council action to change it, which rightfully so it should, and the proposed name is to change it to Box Car Liquors, and go with the railroad theme like we have on so many other things in this town. It was unanimously decided by the liquor store committee, and I guess we're asking the council for, I have reserved the name with the Secretary of State pending, you know, I don't want to put it out there and then somebody's at home Googling it quick and taking the name, so I have it currently reserved, but it's cost us $50 to move forward with it, and it does take council action to do that, so.
What are the other expenses associated besides the $50 name change? I mean, we've already got a city logo, it's on our clocks, on our letterhead, on our shirt, I mean, what are the other expenses to go along with this, other than the registering of the name?
Well, the signage and stuff that we're having done, would, you know, we were going to put signs on the building now, so now's the time to change it, if we're going to, is kind of the approach. There's really no other tangible costs that are upfront at this.
The graphics have all been settled, we don't have to pay anybody to design anything, we don't have.
No, it's just a simple name change, and then when we have the signage developed, you know, that's all part of it, whether we use our existing logo or not, that'll be a part of the fee of them basically building our sign.
Which would have, which would have been built anyway.
Correct.
So.
From the movement.
Well, I'm concerned with the cost of changing our graphics, so we've already paid to have the other logo done, it just seems to me a little frivolous to throw that at something for, to change a name to where it doesn't really amount to anything, I just, doesn't make sense to me, but that's me.
Just spend the $50, you mean?
Anyway, well, anyway, if you haven't researched what it's going to cost to do the signage, I understand we've got a copyright on the railroad sign now, or I believe that's ours, that logo, to design another one, you know, and this is actually, Jesse James used to work here, I don't know if he's going to need his permission, if that's what your intent was, was to copy this, then you need to get his permission, those are the things I'm thinking of.
I think the intent was, is we're going to have to buy new signage for out on the highway.
Right, no, I understand that.
And the company that we would buy the sign from, be it if we would put the front part of the engine on it, or if they put a boxcar on it, wouldn't be the same price.
Yeah, I don't know, that was my question, I don't know if they are or not, that was what I was.
Within reason, I'm sure.
There's no current tangible costs that we would have into changing the name, except the $50.
Except, so, yeah, the rest is an unknown.
The signage, well, there's.
It's going to be a signed regarding.
They're going to build a sign regarding.
Right, no, I understand that.
We're not looking to trademark the logo or anything like that, we're just looking for an assumed name, and then just put block letter across the top on that canopy section above, or not the canopy, the lit, the soffit portion, above that says Box Car Liquors.
Any increased expenditure there would come before the council, would it not?
Yeah, there's no, the only thing that the council's already approved is the signage in the original estimate for moving the liquor store. But regardless, if we put Tracy Liquors, or Tracy Liquor Store, or anything like that, we're going to have the cost in the building that's signed regardless.
So we need a motion for the $50, is that, if I'm hearing this right?
Motion to change the name.
And for the change?
Yep, and then there's a resolution that goes along with it.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we change the liquor store name to Box Car Liquors, and then can I just do the resolution?
Yes.
Resolution to 1941, for approval.
Well, second. First and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to approve resolution 2019-41, approve liquor store name change, and the $50 that we needed, that was to reserve the name?
It's the fee for the secretary.
The fee to change it, okay. Very good. Liquor store patio trees.
So at the current liquor store location, the trees that are near the building, and actually Rosemary is here, so if you want, it's up to you if you want to call her up for this, but the trees are starting to intrude, the root system on those trees is starting to intrude into our basement and causing some potential damage. There's some, you can see daylight in a couple spots where the roots have started to separate some things, and I did check into transplanting those trees, it's just they're too close to the building, it's just not, would actually cause, potentially cause more damage to the building by trying to remove the trees and move them. That, I know the patio is a sensitive deal, and I know that it's, but the only solution I see, and Shane, you can weigh in on this as well, is to actually remove the trees to stop the roots from pushing against the building any further.
We have to grind it out, too, or just basically cut them?
Well, they'll quit growing, and we can dig down next to the building and stop those root sections, you know.
It's going to kill the root, then take out.
Without busting up the concrete, that's where my, we don't, if we cut the tree down, and where they are close to the building, we should be able to dig down and remove some of those roots and stop it from becoming a bigger problem than it already is. Now, we're not currently using it, so I can't see putting anything in place right now, but whether we grind the stumps, or, you know, like you said, cutting the tree.
Less invasive.
It's fine by me. Do we need a motion to do that?
If memory serves me, they spent, we spent close to $5,000 in landscaping on that patio, and the discussion was brought up about the trees affecting other properties, and they said, no, it's fine, so, they got to go.
So do we have any ideas to the cost?
Well, public works guys can go over and cut them down.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sorry to volunteer you, Shane, but I assume you're okay with that.
We'll just cut it off flush with the surface.
Yep.
So not a trip hazard, we got some.
And no one's, no one's going in and out of there currently now, so we're not worried about the, it would be just a matter of them cutting them, removing them, and treating the stumps, and letting nature take its course.
Okay.
I'd make a motion then to remove the trees on the patio. You want the bushes too, or whatever?
Just the trees along that building.
They'd be along the east side of the patio, abutting the neighboring property, have all that removed.
I'll second that.
First and second, do we need to set some sort of timeline for this?
We'll just do it as soon as we can get the public works through on it.
All right. So first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to remove the trees at the liquor store patio. Resolution 2019-40 amending resolution 2019-38 to change a dollar amount of grant.
So we actually got, we got contacted from the DMV, they recalculated all that stuff, and we accepted that, those grant dollars. They recalculated everything, and I don't know how it changed, and I think the dollar amount changed from 21,206 to 21,109, so we lost about $100 bucks off of it. Not sure who did the math the first time, it's probably the people who were in charge of MINDLAR.
It's MINDLAR, they're the largest.
That's so.
So if we don't approve it, do we get the larger amount?
No, that's the problem, the larger amount ain't coming no more, and we need to do the accounting things we have to do.
Isn't that like, you know, getting a check in the mail, it's.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution 2019-40.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, resolution 2019-40 amending resolution 2019-38 to change a dollar amount of the grant. To lose, what, $101? All right, so the resolution 2019-42, approve payment to Reiner Construction for work completed on stabilization ponds number 11.
So this was in addition to your packet, this is for the, the current status of the pond project. We had a meeting today on USDA, they don't sign off until after the council, but they preliminarily approved it, the engineers approved it, and it's a request for, they basically want some money for the work they've done up to date. And they, I don't know if any of you guys have been out there recently, but they are cooking along, they are getting a lot done, and they, they're currently on the schedule that we discussed this spring, so they are, they're doing well, they've had some good weather.
Didn't we just make a payment on this?
And will continue as they keep making strides.
Are you going to bring up number four?
I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna wait for discussion, but along with you.
Sure, let's.
You said you were at a meeting with them, they've got change order number four here pending, and it's our favorite subject again of trees. Why are we?
Well, it's close to the sidewalks.
Are we putting, are we putting trees next to our ponds?
No, what it is, is they actually, what's that? No, what it is, is they actually, it said discharge pipe four, Shane. They want to extend it a little, and there's a portion to keep it from undermining, and there's a portion where there's some trees they have to remove.
Remove it.
So, yeah, that's the only reason why they mentioned it. And they have to because they're cutting them down.
No.
They've got to let us know.
Yep. Oh, that's good.
Yeah. We don't need to be planting problems.
We want to kill trees at ponds.
That being said, then, I'd make a resolution, a motion to approve resolution 2019-42 for a payment to Reiner in the amount of 49,764.98.
Second, then.
First and second. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to approve resolution 2019-42, approve payment to Reiner? Is that, Reiner Construction for work completed on stabilization ponds in the amount of Our favorite, municipal accounts payable.
Always my favorite. Motion to approve the municipal accounts payable without breakthrough beverage and the municipal accounts receivable.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, that, the amount on the Reiner was actually 527,177.75.
Let's complete the vote, and then we'll come back to that. Any opposed?
All that's a change of order.
All right, then, the motion carries for municipal accounts with breakthrough beverage and municipal accounts receivable.
That was my bad. I amend my motion to the correct dollar amount of the 527,177.75.
Okay, so I get a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Or second, thank you. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to.
I'd make a motion to approve the payment to breakthrough beverage.
Okay, first, first and second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone else?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion carries.
You're just on top of that.
I can't, aye.
Breakthrough beverage. Do we have any unfinished business? No? So we would go into.
Make a motion to close the regular session of the council meeting and enter into the closed session.
We have a first? Do we want to get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, we will now close Tracy City Council meeting, and we will open.